Don't we have anybody on that board? Sat together with board. Okay, we'd like, we'd like to request that.
Well, it's fine. Uh, it's four member board. We would have to do an appointment to get an actual official member. Although we could have like an ex-official member.
Okay.
So without any hassle like whatever, just write up, we just write up resolutions. And put somebody on there so they will be in the world.
And, and my, my reasoning for that, a lot of times we just don't know what's going on. It's not that we want like having a special authority.
We did the same thing as good.
Yes, yeah, so.
Yeah, we can do that.
You think that is the, the best way to go, Justin?
Yeah, yeah. See a lot of boards have ex-official members for that reason. Probably prudent.
If you just let us know.
We'll, uh, we actually meet tomorrow night. And I'll bring it up. And they will tend to really act on it and then we'll present the formal resolution to them at the next meeting.
Do you add that to the next commissioner's agenda if they're okay if somebody from the council sits on that board or one of them? They already have a lot of. Think we could probably find somebody on this board that would do. They would be better business practice for us to be involved with each one of the organizations that have to really start counting. Tax dollars. Are you ready now?
Make a motion, we approve the airport budget in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollar.
Yeah, the motion from Brad is the second. Second from Don, um, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed?
Just more of a real quick caveat on that.
So we have. Must be the reason why you're raising that, so let's just make sure that I understand.
So, so. Most of our capital projects are participate, participated in by federal aviation administration. And that money is raised as an excise tax for users of aviation. First of all, you buy an airline ticket, if you look at the next size tax on there that goes into this fund. Uh, they buy aviation fields, fuels, tires, whatever goes in and out of that fund is where most of the capital money comes from. This divided between general aviation airports, like what Stark is. Uh, because Stark is part of this system. And then the other is forces the, uh, uh, the commercial airports. And so, uh, ninety percent of the cost of, uh, capital, most capital projects. There are some that are held and will are paid for by the FAA, five percent will come from, uh, NDOT. And then five, that local money. So when we do a million dollar project.
Yeah.
It's not nearly a bad.
Yeah.
And so we, we are, the reason I mentioned that is, uh, you were, uh, we just extended the runway to five thousand and one feet again under that same formula. And we are, uh, have let contracts and constructional begin on the spring. To rehab, rebuild the original, uh, part of that runway. And, uh, that again is paid for ninety-five-five and applied by us. But those monies, uh, state requires them to go through our budget.
That question from commissioners, then I think it would be a good idea if it's a council member, there's that, or a board will recommend, I think that since it's really heavily going to be in consideration of the way the. You know, tax dollars are used, I think it would be a good idea for a council person to know, but you know.
I'm sure the board is.
Okay, all those who are in favor, pass that down. So anything else, Charlie? Okay, so just let us know that on the board.
I will, we'll bring, I'll put on the agenda, it leaves here, so.
And honestly too, we should just have a better interest in it anyways, you know, besides anything else, I mean, you know, I mean, as we grow. The airport is an important part of our.
Well, and, and there's more and more jet training out there. Uh, some of the projects that are coming up is the aircraft parking area is going to be increased by two and a half times. Uh, they're going to put some additional connectors in, uh, between the two runways. Um, gonna be adding to the burner fencing. Uh, oh, gonna replace the, uh, all weather up observing station. Which, uh, a lot of the weather that you see out of, uh, South Dead, et cetera, where here comes out of the airport and all that electronic system. So, yeah.
Excellent, thank you, okay, um, Lisa.
So. Your, um, for your contribution to start things. I mean, you guys started with the five thousand dollar influx, uh, which helped.
I think there's.
Thousand dollars for bright running during the year. We went from four places last year to ten this year. And, uh, her place was Ireland Electric. In downtown, she, uh, is a recipient of twelve thousand dollars. She plans to expand her product line. From women, uh, to include baby and men and gift items and so. Um, we, and she kind of really blew away the, that just because she had portfolio. She had a business plan that she prepared that she gave to the judges, uh, ahead of time and she does seem a little bit more ahead of the game, so. Um, we thought that was, that was great. Her second place winner was, uh, Dalton Tunis. With Bone Boss Game Call. He, um, hopefully he'll have a storefront one day, but if he won six thousand dollars, which was the second prize and. He will be purchasing a CNC machine that he will use to cut wood, uh, for his, um, mainly for the parking pole, I believe. But he wants to expand that into, um, the bigger sporting goods stores and so hopefully we helped with him to get that going. So, but we want to thank the county because that first, um, initial five thousand donation for the sponsorship really got us going.
Just first and second.
The first and second.
Some reason I thought.
Um, we're thinking about, you know, looking at next year's potential different ways in what kind of, uh, sponsors. We end up with, what I will tell you, the, um, all of our solar folks were fantastic. They, they were, uh. They stepped up and were, uh, provided sponsorships and a lot of even our small businesses, but it was, it was great, so it's a lot of work. But, you know, I think Mary and I will continue it next year if you guys can get the word right, all projects. Uh, the other thing, the only other thing I wanted to mention tonight is we are starting to work on a strategic plan. When you guys about three years ago had that study done, uh, by Thomas P Miller. One of the things said that, you know, you really need to work on a strategic plan. I have been reaching out to other Lidos to take a look at theirs. We need to get focused on a few things because we, I mean, I really feel like we're just all over the place. Trying to hope this and that and the other, and I think by putting a strategic plan together, that'll kind of keep us on track. Keep us focused on what, what's expected of us as the development department or. Group, whatever you want to call it. So, um, we have a meeting next week, we will be there, Mark early, Brad if we can be by Zoom, we will have a Zoom option. We have our new computer, so that's now we're, we're all good at, uh, setting up Zoom meetings. So, um, yeah, and just kind of a pre-planning meeting, we'd like to pull our full board together for about a half day in December. To kind of, uh, work that out and have it in place hopefully by the end of the year, the first of next year. So, those, that's what we're working on, um, any questions? I didn't really want to provide an update, otherwise we could be here for a long time. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I was just looking at my stuff from her, so I saw yours.
Okay, I think Mary put out a.
That was easier to see than you're even on the.
Good deal, thank you guys.
Um, with the next thing we have is transfer request, you don't see any people here because Rachel and I met with people on. Except for him, that's right, um, but, um. We met with everybody separately, so I'm just going to put you enough at the bottom with what I'm going to say that.
I guess.
Um, I have the planning commission first, um, I was contacted by, uh, Todd Jackson and, uh. He's saying a real interest in taking a look at the budget and he had been speaking with Bose and, uh, they weren't going to make it on their fuel. And, uh, was interested in learning how about additional appropriation explained, looking at other places in the budget and so. And Rachel reached out to Mary and, um, that's why the first one is, is to cover their fuel through the end of the year, um. I'll rely on Howard, uh, as our representative on the board to understand that better. I, to me, I didn't know, like, apparently there's been a lot of inspections of the solar farms and that's where the money. That's where all the gas has been used up, but I don't know what's being inspected. The second thing, and I do want to bring this up because we don't have that on the agenda. But we, we commissioners and, uh, the council endorsed it in two thousand thirteen. Setting ordinance for vehicle use, I mean, you need to enforce that, this year, otherwise we're in violation and we, if they catch it, we're audited. Since I caught it, that's the same, we do self-audits too, since we recognize that we have to bat on it. We set ordinance that if somebody uses a county vehicle and EMS, um, EMA. And law enforcement will be, um, uh, would not have to fall into this because they can respond to emergencies from home. The rest of the people that use personal vehicles like the planning commissions, surveyors, et cetera, et cetera, like that. Clearly says in our ordinance, if they use a company vehicle, they must report to us what, uh, how much mileage they travel. And what, what amount of that was company mileage or, and what my, what was personal mileage? And if they do not report to us by the end of the year, well, quarterly, I think it might say, or we were talking about quarterly. If they don't report to us, then the assumption is made that it was used for personal use. Sorry, you would, coroner would be, you know, obviously you go to emergency, but those that don't respond to emergency. Highway Department couldn't respond to an emergency, so there's probably only a handful, but just so we follow our own policy that we set. That's how it goes and then it's assumed by Stark County that if they don't submit that to us, then it was personal, all person. So I did let Todd know that, um, you can help us remember too, sir, and, uh, you know, just, you know, um. Just sort of, but he is aware of that. It's not that anybody's being a bad guy and, you know, but that way we could track it, especially when fuel was being overshot by fifty percent. Then the public starts hearing that in the meeting and they also know, hey, you have to go policy or whatever. So anyways, this was to cover that to, so that way they don't run out of money by the end of the year.
I'll, I'll get a little more explanation from Todd, we'll talk about it and I'll have a report at the next meeting. I'm sure some of it's going to be the. High cost of gasoline.
Yeah.
You know, that's going to be, that, that's going to be part of it.
The other thing is, is that the solar farms will be more established next year, so maybe, until top, maybe it'll go down because of that too. Um, so, you know, we may have some. So anyways, uh, without, if anybody else has any further discussion on that topic. I'll look for a motion on the planning commission transfer.
Make a motion, we transferred planning commission. To, uh, fuel, lubing, tires, the amount of thousand dollars, auto repair maintenance. And the same amount of a thousand.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
A second from Howard, is there any further discussion? Um, and actually, when I spoke to Todd, I did recommend to you the auto repair maintenance because it's a new truck, so it shouldn't. Right, yeah, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The only problem is it has those mud tires on it. I don't know that those last as long as the all-terrain impact tires, but we'll see. Um, the same with Purdue extension, it was just a small, uh, transfer, I spoke to them, uh, Rachel and. You know, didn't think for twenty-eight dollars like we need to have her coming and grilling. So I'll look for a motion on that.
Make a motion, we approve, uh, additional appropriation in the office supply twenty-eight sixty-three from postage. Same amount, twenty-eight sixty-three.
Motion from Brad, is there a second? Second from Don, uh, Binkley, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I did want to have the opportunity to grill the auditor.
I'll do that, right? I'm covering your face.
You really heard me mean.
Yeah.
I went over in my office to apply a budget because things are much more expensive and I had a little money in deputy and training to cover that. I'm not going to deny it, just throw it out.
Make a motion, we do now. Make a motion, we approve the, uh, for the auditor, the additional appropriation and office supplies. Six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents, do seventeen dollars and fifteen cents, human resource and seventy-six ninety-two. Take that from deputy seven nineteen nineteen and training, three dollars and eighty-five cents.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from.
Is this human resource, is that from your anger management?
Is there any further discussions? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, Rachel? Uh, Rachel and I have been talking to the prosecutor for some time. What did we decide on that?
He turned in transfers enough to do without, that don't need council approval, but. She needs some council approval on them, I mean, there's really, she just needs to. She should try to. Budget better in the.
My biggest concern was coming into this, I mean. I've mentioned in a couple, the last couple of meetings that was concerned, this is trying to help it and straighten it out, but I. Well, definitely budget workshop time next year, we'll need to look a little more freely and, and bring up expenditures because.
I guess we're like eighteen thousand dollars left in legal secretary, maybe that need, line item needs to go away.
Okay.
And it needs to be changed.
That, that I can explain, so there, she has a paralegal and legal secretary, no, she has a paralegal and, um. Something, maybe it is legal secretary, I don't know. But the commissioner did not, you guys approved a budget for a paralegal, the commissioner did not approve. The position as a paralegal, so I have it so messed up in the financials because I have to put money here. But it's really being paid out of here because the commissioners did not approve that position title change. So that is some of it.
So if there's no, if paralegal wasn't approved. Why are we putting my into paralegal?
To see what the, I think it's.
I'm just asking.
I think it's clerk one and clerk two and then it's supposed to be paralegal and legal secretary.
The name, right?
Yeah.
They didn't better change the name.
It's very messed up right now.
This right here is why they named it.
But I gave, I think I gave you two of them, you don't have to approve anything on this big one because this is all within the same series.
I saw it, yeah, they're all thirty-two.
It's only the.
Let's do all thirty-two ones here.
Yeah, it's only the eighth thing.
This one?
Yes.
Not the.
Correct.
Okay. I make a motion, we, uh, do an additional appropriation from Stark County Prosecutor. In the lines of paralegal, fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars, victim's advocate, the amount of eleven hundred and ten dollars. And office supplies, the amount of three thousand dollars. And we take that out of the line item of legal secretary and the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Howard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed? Um. I'm here representing the EMA director, but I see that, uh. The office supplies number has. That's why I'm just not sure which. Three, oh, the six is broad, so like we missed twenty-nine.
I want her to be. Yeah, I didn't know. Office supply somehow she was six tenths of a person, and that she's going to be opposite any.
No, it shouldn't be a.
So that should not be there.
No, the dick shall not be there.
Okay.
And this was just housekeeping. Does anybody have any questions for me about it?
Make a motion, we do an additional appropriation of the EMA. Need about twenty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents in office supplies, two hundred and forty-eight dollars in education and seminars. And take that from garage and over the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Have a motion, is there a second? And a second from Don, I think, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay. And then. The ones from EMS, we have sanitation, gas and oil, is that like a true additional because there's no, there's no account showing the reduction.
It's all, it's all these together. And the reduction is.
Okay, this is a. I understand.
He confused me too.
Yeah. In the future, can you just add it? Yeah, no problem, yeah, thank you. Otherwise. They can. I have a paper shuffle. Yeah.
Make a motion, we do additional appropriation for EMS.
It's actually a transfer.
But it's an additional appropriation to the one from the other.
Yeah, no problem.
Part-time staff, fifteen thousand. Ambulance supplies. It's the twenty.
Yep.
Twenty thousand, software, fifteen thousand, full-time staff, ten thousand, utilities, three thousand. Sanitation, one thousand, and gas, oil and lube, ten thousand. Take that from full-time paramedic and the amount of thirty thousand, part-time paramedic, eleven thousand. Shift captains, thirty thousand and longevity, three thousand.
Make a motion from Brad, have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second from Ken, and I just have a discussion, um. You know, when we first got on, I was asking about ambulance supply, but thank you for working on these things because you said you were going to do all this, um. And, and I know that the SWAT, I talked to Rachel and I know that Eric ordered all these SWAT teams, even though we never approved having a SWAT for EMS. Are all of the items bought for the SWAT from the grant or are some things, things that we can return and take off your ambulance supply budget? There are things that we can return because we're not going to have a SWAT team. So we're trying to find out where the grant came from and what to do with it.
If they return it though, when they, we get our money back, we have to give it back to the grant.
I was just wondering, was there anything that was not funded by the grant that we bought that will help your budget too? I think everything has been accounted for from the grant, yeah.
Okay, well, I don't have any worries about it.
Either way, we all, and then you think we're not. We got the grant to have a medic SWAT team, if we're not having a medic SWAT team, we still got to give the money back.
Yep.
So you might as well.
That's why I was, yeah, I was hoping maybe some of it would help, you know, so I'm still having a hard time understanding how we, how. Ambulance supplies was so short this year, we can talk about that later. Yeah, um, and we're making adjustments there, there is. When reviewing that, um, our outlining stations and our trucks were stockpiling stuff. So when the central supply, when it counted them, the outside stations were not getting counted nor the trucks. So when the supply officer counted, ten IV catheters, there's actually how many at each station and in the trucks. So that's being taken tighter control of that.
Do you have an auditor SWAT team?
Yeah, just, I'm sure it's easily answered, but in the reduction from the accounts, a seventy-seven thousand dollar reduction in payroll, is that. Are they taking away positions or?
We don't have anybody working with positions.
So nobody's working those positions, but those are positions that should be filled or not?
Yes. Right now with the.
That's my question, we can't find some, or, or basically, there's seventy-seven thousand dollars that should be going to payroll.
Right.
And I'm not saying you're wrong, but seventy-seven thousand dollars should be going to payroll for staff that is needed. That we can't get, that we can't get. Okay, that answers.
When I did the budget, I estimated that if we had staff, this is what we'll pay to the end of the year. So I won't be sure.
Yeah, that's what concerned me.
Yeah, I put those numbers in and minus everything, so, and some of those accounts are cushioned that I put. Trying to think about what we're going to be spending the rest of the year, so I added that into.
Okay.
It's a good question.
Well, I just, that, you know, we do buy these.
Yeah, just to reiterate that, so your question, that's a good question. The money that you allocated here was actually from, uh, a boom that we had from not having staff previous to this date.
Right.
Yeah. And if we hire them, we have the money to cover it. Well, hopefully we'll hire them. Right. Yeah, so, um, all right, any more discussion?
I'm good.
Uh, all those, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? And then. That's it. Do you want to explain the additional appropriation staff that we have, Rachel?
No, it was all maximum. You have to approve them.
We didn't approve.
That's why I said. That's why, we had discussion about the additional appropriations last month, so. Does anybody want to review them or would you like to make the motions?
So you're ready? I think I'm long ahead of you.
Yeah. I don't know, but I said something.
Copies of last month, I didn't think I'd have to do it again.
No, no. Does anybody want to see these again before Brad makes his motion?
We do this one more time.
You can do it all one motion, but make sure you say the blend and how much.
They, uh, I make a motion, we do an additional appropriation in health, eleven fifty-nine, in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Fund eleven fourteen, jail seat it, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. In the fund ARPA. Eight nine five zero. The amount of five hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-four cents.
Which is how much has been allocated so far. I sent you guys that spreadsheet.
Elect an official fund, twelve seventeen, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. CCD fund, eleven thirty-eight, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Regular seated, one one, one two, the amount of eighty thousand dollars. And one 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 four jail seated in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-six cents.
And why, I don't remember, why were there two jail seated?
The first one was for just the dispatchers.
Dispatchers.
It's just like one is for everything else that they were here for last month.
Yeah.
I didn't remember. Uh, there's a motion on the floor, and is there a second to that motion? Set from Don Binkley, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And is there anyone opposed? All in favor, Rachel?
I did provide you all a fund report so you can see the balances of each fund that we have.
There's a lot of paper assigned, headed to you guys. So we just felt short in the budget. To create that kind of a deficit for last year.
Um, for which one?
Well, for example, like the, 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 uh. Was it eleven? Jail seated, one 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 four.
So that you're looking at the balance that we have in there, so that's just like your cash balance.
Okay.
The appropriations that was approved for the budget for twenty twenty-two, yeah, they, they went over what was approved. So you had to do an additional appropriation that will come out of that cash balance that you see.
Okay.
Okay. Let's look at that next. Last, uh, meeting, we talked about something coming from the VCA where they were receiving fifteen thousand dollars. And just to go bonus for it. My question one. And I don't know if Rachel answered me on this, hopefully Rachel contacted you. Uh, members of the planning commission had also asked me. Right now, the way this ordinance is written, and I know the previous, the other ordinances are written, that this money is excluded for them to use that for their unsafe building. This money is excluded for them to use that for their unsafe building. On, or the dilapidated building. Is there any way to rewrite the other ordinances in this one to where they could more freely use that money?
Thanks, dude.
Because what would the VZA use fifteen thousand dollars for?
Yeah, we talked about planning commission generally speaking, or for their unsafe billing fund, or just to be shared amongst the two.
I feel like it was mainly for the unsafe building fund.
That, 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 that unsafe building fund, there's some pretty big projects that's going on right now that they've been fighting for. Twelve, what, twelve years or so, and it. They're a problem, and there's no funds to handle that.
So that money would make a big impact.
Yes, it would.
What I told you was that, what I told you was that it, that is VZA money, I don't know if VZA.
Yes, you were gonna talk to Justin. I'm assuming so, I don't know, um, like, you know, they work together, what, what are you, what are your thoughts on that?
We, we haven't really discussed a whole lot of it, other than we know, yes, uh, there's. Justin listed several things that where the money is gonna. Tentatively scheduled to go for, and.
Two projects could probably take, would probably consume that fifteen thousand dollars, Marty. The design, planning, engineering, implementation, enforcement of zoning and zoning enforcement system for Stark County. Engagement of professionals to assist with the design, planning, engineering, implementation and enforcement of a zoning. And zoning enforcement system for Stark County. Funding of part-time and full-time staff for the VZA of Stark County. State of Indiana as needed and permitted via the applicable Stark County salary ordinance.
So I guess, well, this is saying, we could pay for the secretary, their secretary out of this, but we've already funded that, so. Like, the other things just don't seem like they would be that much, like, if they wanted to get, like, some kind of. Help with what they do already, like fifteen thousand just seems like a lot, I just don't wanna landlocked them with that money.
No, we can, I mean, I, so I had. Done that originally since, uh, I had no idea, and I still have no idea what the different departments, what their expenditures are. Um, you say you want them to be shared amongst the planning commission and VZA or one, or two, or, I'm fine, but I think, I don't think the VZA has any problem with that. That was, was at the VZA meeting and said, hey, can we get some of this money in? Uh. It seemed.
Yeah. We're basically a. In my opinion, a joint, two boards that are joint, and we have, and we work together, we share, share the staff.
Now, this way more, I wanna share the money, I mean, you guys, would it be good, maybe, because you still have, it doesn't have to happen until November, right, technically?
Yeah, well, I'm holding the check from, from our settlement, so I can deposit my trust fund and just write it out to, so, so at least the check clears within a hundred eighty days.
And then you guys can talk about it, and maybe.
Because this basically says that the VZA is the only ones that can use it.
Yeah, we understand that.
And you, and we, you guys wanna be able to both.
To work it both ways.
Sorry, I asked the auditor.
I just wanted to see if I could bitter eyes out of you.
I didn't, I didn't catch quite what he had said, but.
Why are you throwing things at me?
But is there, there's gotta be a demand in, in clearing of buildings and, and, and approval work, and. I even offered, yeah, well.
But, uh, I'll spend some of your own money.
Well, I'll propose a bike there, save, save on fuel. He didn't think he would make it out of our town.
Did you have something, Marty?
But the planning commission is the enforcement authority responsible for, uh, unsafe, you know, the, uh. Evolution of a lot of buildings that are unsafe right now that they have no money for, I'm not sure. Uh, in my time when I was attorney for VZA, I'm not sure what monies we. Needed to do, you know, just to do, uh, deals.
We, yeah, I haven't been on the board long enough to know that we've collected much in the way of funds. Uh, from, from penalties from people. But from what the way things looking going on, there's a whole lot of things that's gonna need enforcement, it's gonna take manpower and to do it.
So you guys want, want this redone to say that the, the plan commission and the VZA. Have access.
You wanna pay for the secretary with this money, I'm okay with that, we can put that in the general fund, use it somewhere else, but I think that you guys wanted to try to keep more money within plan.
Yes, yes.
So that up to board, they got extended, will they come up first?
Um, how would they, sorry, was the question, how would they spend, did that come to the council, would they appropriate that?
Well, unless it's budgeted, I think it still has to be an additional appropriation.
Yeah, so we have, we'd still appropriate it.
So it would be, I think they submitted the budget for twenty-three already, right, so it'd still be, they'd have to approach you for twenty-three for any additional appropriations for expenditure. Yeah, no, I'm fine, I'll direct this however you want, I, I only represent the VZA, so, you know, I can't really, but we've got members here, obviously, who are saying, hey, the planning commission was part of this too, that's fine, I don't, I don't care where we put it, I just need to know. Where to put it, because again, I'm holding onto a check that'll expire here in a couple of months, and I can put it in my trust account, we're still gonna have a talk about this, and I'll just write it to the. That fund when we get it established, but I, I mean, it, it's not just, you know. Planning commission, VZA enforcement, it's what was in the planning commission, do we, do we put some in the unsafe building fund, which you guys have established, do we, do we put some in, in, and. You know. I, I don't know what other funds the planning commission has, but.
We're basically in the just, in starting stages of.
It sounds like.
Having, having funds to do something.
Like most of it, you wanna spend on that unsafe building.
Yes.
What we're trying to do is. Clean these, clean these properties up, but yet protect the county's investment in cleaning them up, I mean, we don't want, and Marty, Marty can, he knows. We're trying to clean these properties up and still, and protect our investment we've got in cleaning them up to protect them from sales, if they're, they're probably sold on. Sheriff sales or, or, uh, commissioner sales, and I'm not exactly sure I understand the difference between the two, but try to recover in the future, recover some of our investment we've made in cleaning these places up, right? Marty? Right.
Sounds like we're all agreeing with it, so we're just trying to, yes, we'll defer to Justin on that and get some input from your guys' boards, but.
Yeah, I'll just have to specify in the ordinance, because this is specifically for. Litigation, penalties assessed that are paid, you know, how, how we're gonna split that, it's not like the VZA is a lot of operating money, it's from what I'm gathering here, you know, it's mostly planning commissions, so. Um. You know, I'll, uh. Guess I'll. Be creative with it, you guys can tell me if you like it or don't like it, I'll just, what I'll just do then is, is. Put that, put that check in my trust account, so that a hundred eighty days doesn't expire, since we're still talking about this, and, you know, we can. Play around with the numbers here and see, see what, what you guys. And I think we'll have a more, I, I think they're getting bids right now on what some of this cleanup's gonna cost. I don't have a more exact. You, you, you guys are thinking that you want the, the. It to go into your unsafe building fund. Yes. Okay. That's what, that's what we would spend it on. I'll need to specify that, because I'm sure it has a fund number in the, I'll get that from Rachel then, okay?
Hold on. Are we wanting it all to go in the, I'm like, I can't just. I, I'm gonna have to know at the time of deposit, how much to put into the unsafe building.
Maybe we should let the boards talk about it, Howard can help present it.
Yeah, I, I think that they're getting bids on right now, what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, I know Marion Emmer feels there's a need for updating equipment up there to handle, better track. Property lines and, and better track everything, yeah.
So, yeah, so why don't we just give them a chance to think about it more?
We need to.
And then you can advise if all, all of what they want to do is allowable, or some of it, or.
Yeah, I think the state's pretty, pretty liberal in the way it construes how you deposit monies in unsafe building funds, because they. Want us to tear down those dilapidated structures. It's just, this new ordinance creates a new fund, and your unsafe building fund is already established fund, so I'll have to, under this ordinance, both create a fund and talk about how money's from. Collection of penalties, and that's fine, I mean, that's no problem.
Just trying to, you know, I've been to a bunch of guys, both, both meetings, and I hear you guys talk about that all the time, and I'm not having the money. And I've also talked, you know, from Howard's mind, so. Uh, the spirit chip contract is about the forensic analysis that we're doing on our, um, system. Um, after the meeting that we had, it was, had with elected officials the other day, it was agreed that we would do a forensic analysis. So we have a budget from them. Budget is fourteen thousand dollars. And, uh. Uh, well, actually. Wants to take it out of the auditors account?
She said, take it out of all your thing.
Um. I think there's two options here, I mean, we obviously have other money, but I think seated still has a lot in it, so I think, uh, sorry, seated, Q and C, I think would be a. Would be a big. Choice for this one, and it's related to the system itself, and it's, you know, some, you know, something related to the soundness of the system. We've got plenty of money in Q and C. Have they made a recommendation where they wanted to take the money from commissioners? And. This is just between them, you know, so they didn't have another special meeting or anything like that in common with this. So I guess our, we would be looking at two things, number one, creating the expenditures, but maybe a recommendation of work would come from. Um. You have some specific thoughts on whether ARPA would be better or Q and C? I think Q and C would be better at this point, this would be. Is that what you're making that motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion that we, uh. Approve this fear tip contract, I make a recommendation to the commissioners to take the fourteen thousand dollars.
Oh, oh. Good. Is there a second, a second from Don Binkley, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone, I suppose? All in favor, Rachel? Um, and then, did we talk about the annual employee recognition fund last time?
So in years past, we've done it by. Employees paying, we've done by donations, we've done it by payment out of the no appropriation fund. Um, the commissioners have already approved a day to be closed, for the county to be closed. Thought I had the VFW, but they're requiring a hundred dollar deposit.
Also, it's Christmas party, I just.
Yeah. Thought I had the VFW, but they're requiring you to put down a hundred dollar deposit, so I don't know.
You can get your hundred dollar deposit.
But I can't just write a check.
I'll, I'll. See, that's simple. We paid for three quarters of it last year, you didn't even tell us thank you.
Uh, it's true. Oh my god, it's this year, Jack, can you please say something?
I don't know what I should do.
We're not dead.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to put us in a body bag?
Um, this year, I want to try to get donations, but I also want the ability to use the no appropriation fund if I have to.
All right, so may I make a motion?
But you'll have to put up to amount.
What was it last time about?
It was four, twelve hundred last time.
Donations from the public, is that what you're wanting?
No, donations from our vendors.
Okay.
You wanna mess it, and I, I just said fourteen and fifteen, you cover the motion. Make it fifteen hundred.
Do you have my original?
I didn't, is this copy aligned?
I probably do.
I, look at it. Is there a second?
I have a second today.
Have a second from Howard, is there any further discussion? We have some employees here, is there anybody against? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And is there any opposed?
You need to sign the spirit chip contract.
Okay, um. And, uh, you just want us to sign one of the copies of the resolution for the.
Yeah, I.
She actually had it.
Don't sign that slide yet, send that, no, no, no.
If I wanted to be opposed.
Same thing. That's you.
Want me to put counsel under title for this counsel's fine?
Yeah.
Um, as everybody's signing, do we have anybody that has something for the counsel from the public? Nothing?
No, I, I have something, I'm not a member of the public, but.
Actually, you are.
The public, it's out here, you're not members of, not a board, but yeah.
Um. Elections are right around the corner. I do have a few openings for poll workers, if anybody wants to be a poll worker.
And that could be anywhere, right?
I.
Being there precinct because of the, um.
We're vote centers, so, yes, I, um, Coons Lake has one position open, and I have one in Hamlet. And I may have one at Washington Township.
Not Washington, one at Hamlet.
Coons Lake.
Maybe get that full media into.
Media.
Oh, yeah. Been sitting right behind the polls, I'm not looking at them all.
Um, also, training is gonna be way different, you guys all got an email, I'm. Don't make me come and tap you on the shoulder and say, hey, you're coming with me on. Such and such a date to come help train poll workers, these are your elections as well, so. This is gonna have to be a, a. Public event. In other words, because I need help. Training these poll workers, because we're gonna hold mock elections. So I need your guys' help to go through the line to help these people learn. And they won't do much good with just, just start going through line, through, through the line. You know, fifteen times, so.
We're all about elections, thank you for your hard work, I appreciate it, uh, Mr. Kev Formis or anybody else? Uh, Rachel said she had one more thing, and then I'll ask her more in future.
You all to receive an email from Tyler for the state board of accounts.
Yes.
Um, please respond to them. That's it.
I responded, are, are we expecting another response back? My responses were short, because I don't know if everybody right now.
Even if you don't have, like, anything to say to them, just tell them that.
Well, there is one thing there that says, are you aware that we have, um, instruments in place to look for fraud? So if you don't know what those are, please contact the auditor's office, even if you say whatever you say, I'm aware, but we wanna make sure all the councils at least know that what we have in place to be able to do that, it's important.
They want a response. I'll make a motion to, sorry.
We have a motion from A to return, is there a second? Second from Don B.